Have a moment inside meditation and pledge the flag.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. It is Wednesday, July 24th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renetta McCork. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. So we had a little bit of a different layout this morning because we didn't have a meeting last week, but vouchers and certain items were approved. So I'm going to go through that and then we'll move over to the vouchers and everything else for today.
Okay.
Great.
So last week, July 17th, vouchers for General County for fiscal year '24. 109, 197, 80, 911, 53,003, 2097. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,006, 3210. Camp Muffley, 8,0773, 89. Mason Dixon Park, 6,8026. Mon County Center, 7,009, 5854. Recreation Levy, 22985. Reallocated coal, 12,0475. Assessor's valuation, 24,005, 1172. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 12,12609. Mason Dixon Park, 6875. Assessor's valuation, 2,0320, for a voucher total for fiscal year '24 of 234,29497. Then for fiscal year '25, General County, 340,63349. Coal Severance, 35,00964. 911, 235, 99378. Chestnut Ridge Park, 3,0030135. Camp Muffley, 3969. Mason Dixon Park, $15,050. Transportation levy, $17,46436. Fire levy, 103, 69032. Recreation levy, $64,042.73. Library levy, 4,028573. EMS levy, 30,0038044. Reallocated coal, 20,000. Assessor's valuation, 1,0783. Morgantown Industrial, 49769. Parks and Recreation, 42,86689. Purchasing card, General County, 4,45838. Chestnut Ridge Park, 36790. Camp Muffley, 44740. Assessor's valuation, 78850, for a total of 922,055.65. That's a grand total of 1,156,350.62. Commission also approved in-house budget revisions for general fund for the county clerk, circuit clerk, tax office, prosecuting attorney, assessor, other buildings, sheriff, litter control, parks, and Mon County Center. So that is everything that was approved by the president last Wednesday.
Correct. And as noted in our meeting on 7/10, the commission delegated the authority, the president to sign those or to approve those vouchers and budget revisions last week on behalf of the commission. So they're being mentioned in a meeting for transparency sake.
So that closed out everything for fiscal year '24. So for July 24th, we'll start top, exonerations, there were 71 listings for 32,99561. 11 corrected tax statements, 4,44162. Minutes for July 10th, 2024. Vouchers, General County, 243,1354. Magistrate Court, 324. 911, 2,00637. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,73176. Camp Muffley, 15,36370. Mason Dixon Park, 2,0096113. Mon County Center, 5,20402. Recreation Levy, 93818. Assessor's valuation, 6,000. Payroll, 1,143,89688. ARPA, it's $500. Purchasing card, General County, 10,85029. Magistrate Court, 1767. 911, 22022. Home confinement, 6,54315. Chestnut Ridge Park, 7648. Camp Muffley, 24281. Mason Dixon Park, 12767. Mon County Center, 89371. Assessor's valuation, 25585, for a voucher total of 1,442,79806. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website. Infiduciary orders for July 24th, 2024. We'll pull that state-approved budget revision out and do it separately.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent and agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
The additional fiduciary item is an objection to the final settlement in the estate of Melody Sue Lynch.
Okay. What is the will of the commission?
This is a situation where the bond hasn't been kept up in order to keep the estate going. The bonding company has actually filed an objection to the closure of the estate because of the failure to pay the bond. So the recommendation would be, I'd move that we extend the executor 30 days to make good on that bond payment before further action is taken to either close the estate or have them removed from their position.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? The bond amount has been passed due for four years. It's only 400 bucks, but it needs to be taken care of. So I agree. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Did you put a time? Sorry, I didn't. Did you put a time frame on that?
30 days.
Yes.
Okay. So the other item from the consent and approval, every year the county is required to do a general county fund budget revision by the end of July. I've presented that for your approval. I'm not sure how you want to, do you want to go through each line item?
Sure. In the current approved fiscal year '25 budget, there was an unassigned fund balance of $10 million, which is assigned already to expenses. At the end of the year, that number is actually, needs to be revised to 11,234,902. So the purpose is to take that additional 1,234,902 and assign it to expenses. So go ahead and list off the accounts that we are going to move those dollars to.
Okay. So 401, we'll get 101, 300, 402, 1,500, 404, 10,000, 405, 15,000, 406, 22,000, 412, 3,500, 431, 750,000, 433, 1,300, 443, 3,600, 702, 5,200, 705, 3,300, 731, 1,400, 813, 3,200, 989, 63,602, and 998 is 250,000.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget revision as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? Okay. Move on with the rest of the agenda. Introduction to new employees, personnel changes. Good morning, Jimmy.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Mecca 911, we'll have two new staff starting on July 29th. Their salary will be $3,425.10 per month. It'll be Philip Obermeyer and Jacob Lundey.
Move to approve the new employees as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Any other personnel?
No.
Comments from the public. We'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise their hand. Come forward. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, guys.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mary Ann Foles, 828 Bloody Run Road. And I wanted to talk today, this is something I've talked about before, and just going to ask for kind of a follow-up on this. We have the no standing in the road ordinance. And for a while, that was working pretty good, but it's really back to where it was before we had that ordinance. And I have, you know, some people don't like this, but I've called and I hate to call the Mecca number, but they will send someone out. But I'm just wondering if we could have a process for people to address this. And I'll just give you a couple of examples. Last night at 10 o'clock, I was coming home off the exit of 68 at the intersection of exit one at the intersection of Grafton Road, and there was a man literally standing out where people turn. And I mean, if he had been standing there today, he would have been hit. There was, and this is 10 o'clock at night, it's dark, wearing dark clothes, it's crazy. There's a woman that stands up at the sheets and she's very pregnant. She's been standing there for months. I mean, she's about ready to pop and she's standing out there in the middle of the road. And then when I was coming in today, there was a man who was sitting at the 68 exit one interchange with Grafton Road. You know, he's sitting right there on the guardrail, which you can see has been smashed before. So I'm just wondering, is there a different process that we can put in place for people to call to try to address this? Or is there some kind of a barrier that we could put up that kind of keeps people from doing this? Because it's not safe, obviously, for them, it's not safe for the drivers. And so that's my comment of the day. And then I'll just throw in, still waiting to hear back if you guys are ever going to add anybody to the subdivision group, the planning commission, the Mon County Planning Commission, still looking for an appointment there if you guys are willing to consider it. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Morning, Jamie.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Jamie.
Jamie Summerlin, 209 Kingwood Street. I wanted to come approach the commission about an idea that I've had actually for a number of years, back when I worked at the CBB. I'd spoken to some folks there prior to COVID. My wife and I, my wife is from Oregon, and there's a facility, state park, that's right by her home area called Shore Acres. And Shore Acres, every Christmas time, every holiday season, they have nonprofits that come into that state park that's right on the ocean, gorgeous facility. In the summertime, it's just full of flowers and trees, but in the wintertime, nonprofits will come in and decorate the trees. And each organization, whether it could be a nonprofit, it could be a cheerleading group, it could be a band, you know, to high school, whatever. And then each night for that period of time, the organizations host the event that evening. And so they're responsible for handling the hot chocolate, the cider, you know, the cookies, all those things, and helps drive revenue for those nonprofits during that time. So of course, the number of people coming through is pushed by them actually getting the word out and promoting it. There's been some huge success, even in the state of West Virginia, of a facility doing something like this down in Charleston where the Dirty Birds play. Last year, they had a massive event called Light the Knights there in the ballpark. And over 120,000 people went through that facility during that time. They have in Charleston done a great job of promoting not only Holly Jolly on Brawley, the street down there with the Christmas lights, but also this facility down there for the lights. I did some research recently, there are over 100 ballparks around the country that do this, including the training camp facility where Ken Kendrick has the Arizona Diamondbacks. And we just fortunately happen to have the Kendrick Family Ballpark here in Mon County. I know there's scheduling and logistic challenges that we have to overcome and look at, but the idea originally was to do something at Milam Park. Obviously, the ballpark bodes very well as far as a layout and being able to do something through the holiday season, and would hope that we would be able to work around the schedule since it is the holidays that there wouldn't be practices and things going on. Again, that's all stuff that would have to be determined through WVU and things. But something for our community to drive traffic. I mean, 120,000 people coming to Charleston for that. Imagine the traffic we could drive in just this year alone. And I've already spoken to the developers over at West Ridge as well and other people interested in potentially doing something where we could even take the, this year doing something like this as a first step, and then the following year, the potential of bringing in one of those portable ice rinks or an ice slide that we could put in on the paved area between Star Furniture and BW3s, and to be able to drive traffic there in the town center area as well. So effectively, you would build this to start with, and then we would have a foundation to go upon for next year. Those things aren't cheap, and I understand that. But again, there's hundreds of ballparks around the country that do this. Why not Mon County? Why not Morgantown? I even, you know, I kind of pitched some names to some different folks and looking at how we can do this to keep everybody happy and, you know, looking at different ideas. There's some great names for events like this around the country, but I went out, registered the domain magicatthemon.com because I figured if we've got it at the Mon Ballpark, you know, it's a magical event, magical season, and it could be something that Mon County could own, the ballpark could own, all of these entities could come together and do something for our community that could drive traffic and help bring, you know, even more awareness to the wonderful facilities and things that we have here in Mon County. So I would like to, you know, sit down with the commission at some point, bring some people to the table and see if we could facilitate something like this happening. Again, they're expanding it. Charleston's going to do 2.5 million lights in the ballpark this year alone, along with their ice rink and things that they're doing. I don't like being a follower, I like being a leader and trying to get some things going like this, but there's great examples of this being tremendously successful around the country. Why not Mon County? Why not Morgantown? Why not our communities here partnering with all the other entities that exist here with Granville and Star City and Westover, all of them? We could all benefit. And I think if we work together, we could potentially make something like that happen. Obviously, time is of the essence, and it would have to be something that would be facilitated quickly, which is why we wouldn't want to do the ice rink or the ice slides this year, because that's a six-month process working with those organizations to just even get on the list. But to do something like the trees and do a display in the ballpark and having nonprofits get involved, that's a unique twist that these others aren't doing out there. And I think it could be something that each of the organizations could own and Mon County could be really proud of. So that's my pitch. Just let me know when there might be some time for us to get together and chat and see if we can bring some people to the table to make something like this happen.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is presentation, Becca Clark and W. Extension.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see everybody. So we finished our camping season. As you know, I'm Becca Finn Clark. I'm the 4H extension agent here in Montague County. Always proud to report on 4H camp and how things went, so it's always great to see you. And also Heather's here, Heather, 4H program assistant. So on behalf of Heather and myself, I just wanted, I gave you this in writing, but just so you know, we had a wonderful 4H camping summer. We certainly appreciate your support as always. For the first time, we had four 4H camps, three held at Camp Muffley, one held at Mason Dixon Park for the first time, two of which were day camps. They were for kindergarten through second grade. And then we have two residential camps, one for third through seventh grade and one for seventh grade through age 21. At the end of the summer, when all the dust settled, we had 301 campers, which is pretty substantial, one of the largest, if not the largest, 4H county camping program in the state. So I'm really proud of that. You can see, you know, our Mason Dixon Day Camp number was small, we had 16, but we had such a wonderful time. I have to really commend both Seth and Angela for helping us out. They were both fabulous, really wonderful to work with, and so you have some really great people working in your parks. So we appreciate all that they did for us. You can see, we provided over $7,000 in scholarships for kids to be able to attend 4H camp. And, you know, we utilize, our counselors are volunteers. So our adult counselors give up their vacation time a lot of times to be there to help with 4H camp, and we certainly appreciate their time. We also had teen counselors who helped at all three of our younger-aged camps, and we love them too. They work really hard and they apply and are interviewed, so that's another life skill that they're gaining from participation in 4H. So overall, a wonderful summer. I can't say it enough how lucky we are to have the facilities we have here and have the support that we have from you all. So with that being said, I did bring some 4H campers and members, and so I will have, I'm going to actually have Cole Blosser go first. Cole was a camper at our older camp, and he served as a teen counselor at both younger camp and Mason Dixon Day Camp. So Cole's going to talk to you a little bit about his 4H camping experience.
Good morning, Cole.
Good morning.
Good morning. I kind of grew up in 4H. It's just kind of been like my whole thing. My parents went, my grandparents went, and now I'm going. I have a great time every year. It's just kind of the thrill of my summer. This year, I got to be a counselor at one of the day camps, and I was a counselor at the younger camp, and I just had a blast. Those kids are amazing, they're funny. From my camping experience, I had a great time. I was spirited camp this year at older camp, met a lot of new friends, talked to some old friends. It's just a great experience overall. I'm also part of our livestock judging team here in Mon County. It's also part of 4H. I have a great time there. We've got a competition coming up Friday, so it's just, I think 4H is just a well-rounded thing. It's just a great time, and I encourage everyone to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Speak very well.
Okay. Next, I'd like to introduce Ivy Martin, and she was a camper at our younger camp and also is involved throughout the year with 4H activities. Ivy?
Morning.
Hi, Ivy.
Good morning. I'm Ivy Martin, and I'm here to talk about 4H. 4H is such a nice place to go to. I think a lot of kids should go there. I love 4H and I love, I love meeting new friends and seeing my old friends as well because even though I don't go to school with them, I get to see them at 4H every year. And once they go to older camp, I'll go to older camp. So I love seeing them at younger camp and older camp, and it's such a fun experience to do. And I'm also on the air rifle team, and I love air rifles so much, it's so much fun. And they also have an air rifle team for the summer too, and I'm also on that, and we go to competitions and everything, and it's super fun. And I just, I love things about 4H, I love making new friends, I love seeing people have so much fun, I love seeing who's in my tribe and who's my chief and everything like that. It's amazing.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate you coming here and speaking.
Thank you for coming in.
So any questions that we can entertain about 4H camp this summer or any comments that you have?
The only question I would ask of two of them is, and you don't have to do it today, but is there some way that we can increase the numbers and how can we do that? And we'd be more than welcome to hear what your suggestions are because you're the ones who are there.
That's right. And younger camp, we can't increase the number because we filled up Camp Muffley, so we were working off a waitlist for that and our day camp at Camp Muffley. So hopefully, some of those kids will age up into older camp and will be able to get more kids involved. But yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm very proud, I'm proud of our 4Hers, you know, I consider them my kids. I don't know what their moms think about that, but with them, they're with me, I consider them my kids, and they're just the best. I mean, they're, you can see, you know, they're well-spoken and just wonderful, well-rounded. So like I said, I appreciate you all so much, as always.
We do have some improvements planned for the bunk houses over the, hopefully before your next camp, so.
I heard about that, so that'd be good. And we actually have a 4H member who's an Eagle Scout as well, and he took on council circle as his project. So they're going to start working on that and kind of dig it all out and fix it up before next summer too, so that's really exciting.
That's great. Well, let us know if you need anything on that project.
Yeah, thank you.
Becca, most of the time you come in and a lot of your kids, it seems like it's generational, their parents were in 4H and their parents before then. Do you get, are you getting new kids? Are you getting new kids as like, what's this and then joining?
We are. So one thing that Heather and I do throughout the school year is go out into the schools and do activities, presentations, and we're really proud of what we offer just because the kids in the schools are so excited to see us. So we do hands-on STEM, healthy living, and civic engagement activities. And so while we're there, we promote joining 4H clubs and attending camp. And so we have found, especially now in other counties, it is very generational. And I think that might be why their numbers are so much lower because they're relying on people who had been. But we do a lot of work trying to get people to understand the value of 4H, coming to camp, and we do have a lot of people who, you know, really didn't have any background from their families. We have people that do. I mean, Cole's family grew up in 4H, I mean, you know, so he's sort of generational. But Ivy, I don't, I think she, yeah, so she, she's the new one we recruited.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, that's good to see.
So we have a good mix, I'd say.
Would you want a table at the back-to-school bash in two weeks? There are 1,600 students that go through it, and maybe if you would have some table with the students to hand something out, that might be helpful.
Sure. I will reach out to you about that. I saw that, and usually I'm out of town, but I think that we can manage to do that this year, so that would be great.
Or we could have the parents. It's always better, you know, if the kids and the parents to show that they'd be a part of it. And we'd be more than willing, just contact us and we'll put a table out for you.
Okay, great. I just wanted to leave you with one thing I think you'll think is funny. So Mason Dixon Park, we had a bit of a water issue while we were there, and so of course, everybody was very quick to respond. And so Jay from maintenance came, and I had to laugh. He's wonderful. I said, "Gosh, you can't get rid of me, you see me at Camp Muffley, you see me at the Mon County Center, and now here we are at Mason Dixon Park." So he got a big kick out of that. But I just can't say enough about your staff. I mean, they are all just super helpful. Renetta's wonderful. We just are really lucky to have such wonderful people to work with, so thank you.
Thank you.
Could I snap a picture of them with you real quick?
Sure.
Sure, sure.
And I learned how how.
How how? That's right.
That's what I, you taught me that.
Yes. Good job. They were nervous. Someone was nervous too when I first started, but you guys do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Thanks for coming in. It was a nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And we'll be nice, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. That's right. See, they're up and gone.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation, Mon EMS Annual Report.
You didn't bring any kids with you for us.
Forrest White, Mon EMS, Executive Director. Thank you, commissioners. First of all, I do want to share my gratitude for you all. I apologize that, I know I was on the schedule a few months ago, or probably six or eight weeks ago, but had an unexpected family thing that pulled me out of town, and apologize for having to postpone this, but I am excited to get here today. I know that we have a, that I'm in communication with a lot of you on a very frequent basis, and Renetta, we have a very open dialogue, which is great, but I think it's important, especially after last year, getting the levy passed, that we come and present annual data to you all, to the community, make sure that they're aware of what's going on with Mon EMS, and that we continue to be transparent and open with everything that we're, that we got going on. So I've got a couple of highlights. You all have the hard copies I gave you. Those are available both at our administration in Westover, at our JD Anderson building, is available on our website, it is a PDF you could download, look at, that type of thing. We have plenty of copies, if anyone wants one, just tell them they can reach by or stop by, we're happy to hand those out. I do want to, I like to take this opportunity to remind both the commission and the public that our board's made up of seven folks from around the county. We do have two citizen representatives, we do have both an administrator and a physician from both of the health systems we have in our county, and of course, you're all's representative of Jimmy Smith. And that our finance team includes both finance teams from W. Madison and Mon Health. So it's a very nice, I think, good-sized board, allows us to be pretty nimble, but also is a very tough board meetings, and as you all can imagine, very tough finance meetings, probably more so than with Sean sometimes. sometimes. To remind folks, we are located in seven places around the county. Our, our primary operation center is J.D. Anderson Drive. We do also have places down here in downtown Saberton, Cheet Lake, out towards the Clinton District area, the Gateway, which is right off the exit 155 area, and also Blacksville. So I do like to remind folks that some of our, some of the stuff that the levy supports is the readiness cost that we talk about frequently. And as far as how a 911 call goes, obviously someone has an injury, they called Jimmy and his folks, mega dispatches our ambulance. And there's usually three outcomes after that ambulance gets there. One is we obviously provide the care, transport you to a hospital, and then the crew actually does the charting and moves on. That top red line, as you all see on here, there's no patient found or were canceled en route. That's some of the readiness costs and some of the, the uncompensatable events that we have. And then obviously, the bottom line there, the crew provides care, but then obviously the patient refuses transport. I do have a little bit of news on that bottom red line, but just as a, it's not, it's not a silver bullet by any means. But there's a little bit of news on that bottom red line. But there's, both of those red lines, both still involve patient charting, bunch of documentation on our side. But those are not billable items, as you all are aware. So in that annual report, there's a ton of data. I'm not going through it all. You folks can go through that. But combined, last year, we did a little under 22,000 calls. There was an error on there. As much as those of you who have ever done any type of printed materials, you know how many times you go over them with a fine-toothed comb. You always find an error, and we literally found one where some of this stuff, as you can see, the, the number for 1556 is on there twice, and that's not correct. Because we try to roll up this data. For example, you know, we have multiple categories, let's just for say, like death in the field. You know, there's death in the field, transported to a morgue, to a nurse, or to a funeral home. Maybe it was in county, out of county. So that data gets stratified out. We try to roll that up for you all. But somewhere in our, our printing there, we kind of got messed up. But I think the, the big thing here is that out of those 21,000 calls, we had over 5,000 that were non-billable. So we start talking about the, the impact of the levy dollars and making sure that we're here for the community when it's needed. That's a huge number of, of canceled calls, no patients transported, or canceled en route. To summarize how busy we are in the county, I think this is very eye-opening to see that, you know, the Blacksville area, basically everything west of, of Core, they're seeing about two ambulance calls a day. When you're in the downtown Evansdale area, which also includes Star City, you're in the 12, 13, 14 calls a day. So you start to see, when, when you and the community see ambulance is out all around the place, it kind of drives back to the data that you're seeing here, that we are very, very busy in every corner of the county, providing our services. The calls by hour, as you can imagine, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 AM, not a lot of folks are up, not a lot of things are necessarily happening around the county. But then, middle of the day, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, we're starting to see four or five calls an hour. So that's not uncommon. And then obviously, you all see the, the stuff that makes the headlines when we have a major incident that truly drags down resources. It really can become a, a drain on the actual resources that we have. Some just fun vehicle data, as you can see, our, our maintenance costs with a fleet as large as ours tends to, to roll up pretty heavily. Fuel costs, you're at a whim of, of how fuel is, just like everyone else. Something I think isn't, that is, is kind of neat in this is that, you know, we, we drive over half a million, million miles a year. Here, it's close to 700,000 miles. You start thinking about a cost per mile, and the wear and tear on the vehicles, and the, you know, I know we have very, very smooth roads in Mon County, but there are some, you know, there are some areas where that, not necessarily the case. But a lifespan of an ambulance is about five years. So our fleet age is about 3.75. So it's a constant struggle to keep that fleet up with the amount of miles and the, and the heavy-duty use. They're like the, the police vehicles that you have and other things. They're used constantly around the clock. You use your, your normal vehicle, you drive to work, you go to lunch, maybe go home, maybe go to a ball field or something. You know, but our, our vehicles are moving around the clock, and that, that adds up the miles, and especially the hours on the engine very quickly. Something that we implemented last year, which I'm really, really excited about, and as you can see, it's not all green, and I think that's really important. MONI MS, for the longest time, really didn't have anyone looking to see if the stuff that we were doing was really making an impact on patient care. So just like you all get, you know, when you go to your doctor's office, or you visit a hospital, afterwards usually get some sort of a survey score. There's people that are looking at that, and there's also people in the hospitals or in your healthcare systems that are actually looking at, are the stuff that your, your physicians, or in our case, paramedics, EMTs, that the stuff that they're doing actually making an impact, and is it right? So on here, I've included seven of the national metrics that we use, which tie into mission lifeline numbers. And as you can see on that, that fifth column or sixth column, the national benchmark is actually kind of low for me, being at the 75 percentile mark. So MONI MS has a higher mark of 90%. So our goal is to make sure that we're always above national standards. But we're not perfect. As you can see, things happen, things fall out of compliance, and then we identify those, put, put in plans to fix those things, and then make sure that cares are getting, or patients are getting the care that they, they deserve in Mon County. The, I think you all saw, I think Ben, or some other folks at the menu posted a story on us last year, where we, we became an accredited training center in the state of West Virginia that allowed us to bring education that was difficult to obtain through other EMS agencies or, and other agencies around the state, brought that in-house. And now we have a very robust training schedule, both to, to bring, lay people in from the public, allow them to become EMS providers, but also, as you can imagine, keeping 150 folks up on their continuing education, their competencies and all that type of thing. Takes a, a lot of effort from our education team. We do offer, or we do require, including, myself included, biannual competency. So our medical director develops scenarios and educational, scenarios that require us to go through, make sure that we're up on skills. I always like to say, that is the place to fail, because we want you to fail there in a training scenario and not necessarily out in the public. But it's really good to, to make sure that we're all, all MONI MS folks. And that is a condition of employment, as far as making sure that all of our, anyone that's clinical with us has to go through that, and our medical director has to sign off on that. The, in the last, in 2023, we did offer over 3,800 hours of people attending classes, or 3,800 hours were attained by MONI MS folks through various classes. A lot of that was in-person, some of it was online, through mainly our Westover Education Center. One thing that Delegate Sattler asked us to do when the levy came out, and we, we looked at this, and we're able to absorb it into our budget. But we do offer free training for any Mon County volunteer fire department. We go to the association meetings and constantly offer them education. We offer them to go out to their, a lot of them have like a monthly, or they have a monthly training, and usually one of the months, they have a EMS or patient-centered type training. We offer to come out and do our, show them our equipment, do CPR, that type of thing. We haven't had a huge uptick in that, but it is available to them. It's constantly reminded. And we've developed some really great partnerships, which actually I'll, I'll dive into here in a second. As you all can see, and this, remember, this is 2023, so this is back when the county, you gave us the 1 million. This is pre-levy. And as you can see, the, the net loss works out to really close to what the levy ended up coming into, as far as this amount of hospitals were given us before. And we can, we can dig into that in a second. Some affiliations. I know that we talked, and actually, we came here to the commission with the Mountain Area Rescue Group, where their providers came under the MONI MS medical umbrella, where our medical director oversees their care, and actually extends the MONI MS reach out to some of those austere wilderness environments. That's been really great. We've also built that now with both Morgantown and Star City, and we've got a couple others that are currently in the process of that. And what that does is, these fire departments now have an ability to provide initial care if they happen to be there first. There's a good continuity of care. There's documentation for the care those folks provide. And then those folks that have EMS credentials, they need to be affiliated with an EMS agency. So they go through our competency process. Our medical director signs off on that. So it's just a really great partnership, a great use of resources, and a, and a great use of, just making sure that, and a, a great resource for the county to have that expanding Some things that are, any questions on that so far? I'll keep going, because I know you all have a packed agenda. Some state news, you all probably saw, there's an article a couple places. I know I spoke with Mike Nolting the other day, treat-in-place, that bottom red line on the 911 call. Right now, there's a, there now is five conditions, and it's only with Medicaid that we can, we can actually bill for treat-in-place, and that the patient does not actually go to the hospital. But that is five conditions. It's only Medicaid. It does expand to others January 1st, but that is five conditions out of, think about how many conditions there are available. So it's a small step in the right direction. There, it's one of those things that it kind of came on quickly. So both the MONI MS side and the billing companies and everybody else is all trying to figure out how that's working, because they, the legislature put a 90-day window on it. So you all know how medical billing and everything works. It, it doesn't happen overnight. So we're in the process of trying to get all that up and running. The thing that I think is really exciting is the alternate destination. So as you all know from previous meetings with me, is that EMS has, we basically have one tool. We come pick you up and take you to a hospital. And as you all know, a hospital is not necessarily the right destination for every patient. If I've had sniffles, sore throat, I've got a minor injury, maybe an emergency department is not the best place, and maybe those beds can be saved for patients that are having massive chest pain and massive trauma, that type of thing. The legislature approved an alternate destination, which means that now EMS can, from a scene, take patients to places like an urgent care, primary care physicians' offices, that type of thing. We are currently working with the three major healthcare systems in the state, because as you can imagine, those facilities aren't necessarily used to ambulance showing up with a patient on a stretcher to come in with a, you know, a sore throat or a fever or whatever else. So more to come on that. But what that does is, I think for overall population help, that's going to allow us, for those super non-acute patients, they have other places to go, which then decompress our emergency departments, which, as you all know, are overcrowded, and allows those beds to be available for, for everybody else when, when they're needed. The, the state did pass, gave us a million dollars, the EMS Coalition, which MONI MS is a part of, divided amongst the counties, as you all are aware, that allowed us to focus on EMS provider mental health, which is great. We have a little bit of a causality problem because the state wrote the language that systems are in place to give that money to. But, but we don't have any way trained up to build the systems. So it's a little bit of causality, chicken and egg problem there. But we are working quickly on getting some of those folks up and running to develop teams, because I think it's important that the folks that are out here taking care of the citizens, as you all know, that's a huge toll on those, those folks. And making sure that they're okay, they have the resources they need, so that they're tomorrow for you, I think is super important. And the salary enhancement, which I know is on your agenda here later, is a one-time allocation given to counties that was renewed. And there are some parameters to that, as far as there must be a 911 agency, must have a minimum number of calls and some other things as I know that we are, and I don't know what your, all three of you participate with the county associations, but I know that conversations are happening, not in my committees, but with some others, of trying to come up with a good plan with, like MONI County is doing a really great, great job as far as making sure that you all have EMS services. As you all know, there are counties that don't do that. And there are some counties that have maxed out their levy and other support. So I think both the EMS Coalition and the counties are trying to come up with a plan that works for most. And I know that that's happening, which is, I think, a great step in the right direction. As you all have probably seen on news around the state, there are multiple agencies closing. Thankfully, we have some sustainable operational funding due to the levy. But it's happened four times just in the last couple of months, both Wayne County, Preston County, and some other places, that it's hitting closer and closer to home. So you all are very aware of it, and you took steps years ago to, to solve that problem. But there are places around that are happening. Leadership education. As you all know, probably one of the biggest issues right now is that we typically promote our biggest, our, our best clinician up in the supervisory roles. So instead of training and then promoting, we usually promote and then train. And that's, that's a, a thing that we're trying to get away from. We've had some instances around where some folks in leadership positions have not made some of the, the best decisions. And we want to make sure that we're building the MONI MS to be sustainable and have the folks that are trained and ready to do that. And the last part on the, some of the state news is the EMS retirement. I know Jimmy presented to you a few weeks ago, where, I think you all presented, where his folks could get into the EMS retirement system. The funny thing about that is that MONI MS is not eligible for that. And there's a ton of EMS agencies around the state that are not eligible for that. And it's a huge thing that we're both working on with both the governor's office, state legislatures, and others. And it's a, it's a really weird, long, and you, you and I don't have enough time to get into that today, but it's a, it's a weird thing that, it's, it's great that the, the 911 folks could get into the EMS retirement system, us trying to work to get to where EMS agencies can get into the EMS retirement system. There's a few numbers that are in there, but not everyone. So that's, that's on the agenda this year for the legislative session. And for MONI MS, our big thing right now is trying to build the infrastructure. I know we've stabilized operations for the most part, but it's time for us to start building the EMS stations that MONI County needs and deserves around the, the county, developing some long-term planning for us, making sure that we have a long-term facility plan, we already have a fleet replacement plan, those types of things. Leadership development, which I talked about a minute ago, making sure that we're, folks aren't moving across the country to be middle managers and supervisors of EMS agencies. We, we basically have to develop the talent that we have here in Mon County, which is good. There's just not a lot of processes for that. So making sure that the folks that come into MONI MS have a good leadership ladder, career ladder, so that they can move into supervisory leadership and management roles is high on us. I talked about our quality of care, and one of those things is a resuscitation academy. So myself and some others, our medical director, we attended the resuscitation academy in Seattle. And it is a, it's focused on out-of-hospital cardiac arrests. And it is a, it's a wild, intensive program where you, when you adopt their system, you have to adopt it as a company, and there's a lot of metrics that's reporting out. And, you know, it's a multi-year process to get all the things implemented. But our staff have adopted it, have just absorbed it amazingly. We've had some really great outcomes initially, as far as out-of-hospital cardiac arrest and getting ROSC, return of spontaneous circulation, out of hospital. So we're not there yet, but like, we're seeing some really great things. And it's just us trying to invest back in, making sure that we're doing the right things for the right folks, getting the care of the county folks, getting to the citizens that need it, and making sure that we're doing everything we can. So with that, I tried not to take too much time, hit a bunch of stuff. Any questions?
One clarification.
Yes.
On the information you handed out here.
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay. I do have a question. Could you explain, you increased operating income expenses went up to 14 million. So there was an increase of roughly 1.1 million, and the deficit now has increased to $2 million.
It is.
So my question is.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Is there a deficit, or is there something that you're not adding?
No, no, no. And that's, so it's hidden in the cash flow. So yeah, yes, I want to tell you all. So I did, it just got, it just got passed recently, but this is our 25 budget I gave to you all in printed version. I didn't include it in my presentation. The 2 million, shortfall that you're seeing there is the $2 million that the health systems give.
Okay, then I would appreciate if you could do, because if I'm looking at this.
Yes.
It looks like the county is shorting you $2 million.
Gotcha, okay.
And I, and I'm a little concerned about that. So I just want to make sure people realize that you're not in debt $2 million.
I knew, I thought that question was going to come up, and I actually talked to our finance team, and I said, I know you're all doing this with financial accounting things, but you got to turn it over to where somebody like me can present and show the.
And that's fine. But if, if you could, because I just, with, you know, if the newspaper or something looks at it, it looks like it's short $2 million.
Yeah, yeah. If you look on page three there, the cash flows, you'll see the, the hospital contributions. But I understand, because it hits our balance sheet and not our income statement.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, thank you for that question, Tom.
Forrest, one question. Whenever we were working on, when MONI MS first came to, to pass, and we were pulling these two organizations together, one of the biggest questions that always came up was response time across the county. And I know you keep data on that.
I do.
Then the next time, if you'd just kind of also let people know how you've improved the response time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes.
That people can, people can respect. Again, that is the part, that's a huge component of the readiness, is having those additional vehicles out there, whether you need them or not.
Yes.
So, and that's, that, that component is really driving a lot of your expenses.
Yes, absolutely. No, that's a really good call out, and I did not include that in my presentation. But that is, we actually look at that so frequently that I forget to, to roll it up into something for you all. So I apologize.
Well, it's important for the citizens, so they know that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, previously, you know, it was 45 minutes to get an ambulance to and, to and from this location, and now on average, it's 10. You know, those are the type of things that, that's what you're paying for when you, when you've agreed to the levy.
Thank you for that. And I actually will, I'll summarize some stuff and get some stuff to you all as well, just so you can see current data as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
And we'll be taking up your other thing. I assume you'll be waiting around.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay, grants. Colleen Coon, Commission Office Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the first grant I have for you is the 2024 Have a Security Grant Application. The county clerk's office is requesting $19,438.91. So there's that cover page that the three of you will have to sign. And then there's also a certification regarding lobbying that needs to be signed. And then I have requests for reimbursements. The first one's the governor's highway safety program, safe communities in the amount of $343.15. I have the governor's highway safety program, safe communities in the amount of $343.15. I have click at our ticket in the amount of $112.63, and impaired driving in the amount of $1,769.77. And I have the community development block grant request reimbursement in the amount of $1,854.72.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Received the request from Catholic Charities West Virginia to manage the homeless shelter operations at Hazel's House of Hope. This would be a replacement of the Bartlett House.
Okay. So we have this request that we've been anticipating. We will review it and discuss it in a future meeting.
I do, I would like to contact them because there's some questions I have in the budget.
Well, that's, as we'll work through.
That's what I'm saying.
Get any questions that we have answered, and then when we're satisfied with it, we'll put it on the agenda.
Sounds great.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
Yeah. Received the 2024 sheriff settlement. This would be for fiscal year '24. We'll put that on file. And then also, chief tax deputy yesterday informed me that the legislature passed a bill, Senate Bill 730, that revised the form used for the calculation of the sheriff's commission. So I've never been involved in the calculation before, but there's a formula that they use for the supplemental commission that the sheriff receives for the collection of taxes. And so typically, or in previous years, the commission has never had to sign off on that. They are now requiring the commission to sign off on that. So I'm not sure when you guys, when we'll actually get the calculation part of it. I don't know if they've collected enough taxes yet to trigger that commission, but I assume that that will come down at some point for you all to approve. And also, last piece I got was a letter, it was attached to some minutes, for the Montague County Building Commission, but they have had a young lady working as a secretary for the building commission for many, many years, Janet Low Price, that works for the, she works, and her real job is the county clerk's, she works for the county clerk's office, but she is resigning from that position. So they'll have to get a new, a new secretary. So I don't know if you have anybody that you would know that would be interested, but it is, it is a paid position. They're, they get paid to do that. So we'll have to find them a new secretary.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Renetta, did you have anything?
I'll bring it up under my report.
Okay. All right. Unfinished business? There's none. New business. Consideration to approve requisition number seven for the Series 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase One Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $15,212.50, and those funds will be paid to Wes Banco as the trustee, that's an annual trustee fee, and also to Steph Toen Johnson for their legal work.
Move to approve the requisition as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider for approval requisition number 30 for the Series 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
Requisition is for $75,927. And those funds will be paid to Adrian Enterprises and Thrasher Engineering.
Okay.
Move to approve requisition number 30 as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider for approval the service agreement with West Virginia, West Virginia Network for County Commission email virus and spam filtering for FY '25.
This is an annual agreement that we've had in place with West Virginia Net. I've had, we've had IT review it, and they've given their blessing. So we just needed commission's approval.
Move to approve the president signing the service agreement as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that amount on that agreement is 1,500 per year.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Consideration to approve the recommendation received by Mont EMS regarding the distribution of monies received from the West Virginia Legislature for emergency medical services, personnel salary enhancement.
Move to approve the recommendation, but ask if Forrest has anything to add to it, or do we just want to?
Well, we'll accept the motion.
Second. Any clarification?
Again, I think Forrest explained, explained this, this money was appropriate to us by the state currently. Our current account sits at about 143,763. Forrest provided us a plan for distribution of 125,659.31 of those dollars. Actually, the state distribution, the calculated amount for this salary enhancement is 125,581.40. And then the rest of that was that mental health part that still has to be figured out, as Forrest indicated. And it just provides a, for full-time employees, which they have 68, it provides a 1487 increase per year, part-time and casual, I'm sorry. Forrest, why don't you come on up?
Yes, not this. Once again, Forrest, Mont EMS. It's not a per year.
Yeah, it was just that one-time 1487 allotment for part-time and casual. There's 13 of those employees at 743.50. And then for casual, there's 16 of those. What's the difference between casual, oh, greater than 500, and then there's casual, which is under 500. So then there's 16 of those, and it's 371.75. So with taxes and everything, that comes to 125,659.31.
Yes, I think the big, thank you for that. A couple of things is that, one, it is a one-time distribution from the state. It did get renewed for next year. And then the second thing is, is that, and I think Renetta alluded to this a meeting or so ago, where there was not great guidance from the state or direction, and there was a lot of back and forth, and some counties were doing a lot of different things, and we wanted to make sure that our county was on point. And then I think one of the confounding factors was, it's incumbent on the EMS provider that receives the disbursement that they only receive it from one county. So if we have EMS providers that work multiple counties, so we put some checks and balances in that the folks that are receiving it from the Mont EMS side are getting it from only one place, so.
And we have gone back and forth with some questions. The last one was whether this was shared with your board, which you have shared with your board, and they are in favor of this proposal. So we're taking a vote now to approve it to commission level, which is required. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, and tell your employees thank you for their service. Okay, no other, no items?
No.
Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors?
None.
Done? Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Okay. First of all, I want to remind everyone, Friday, there's a spaghetti dinner at St. Mary's Church from 12 to 7 for Jessica Kolbank, and I hope people will show up on that. Second, I really appreciate, Jamie, you thinking out of the box. In fact, I really liked the idea, and I hope that we can get a group to consider that again, especially would have to be someone from Granville, definitely, because it's in Granville. But I think that would be just, I think it's a great idea, coming from both nonprofit and regular, and hopefully we could look at something, if it's possible, to do that. But I think it's something we should consider. And finally, Ms. Fols, you bring up a really good point. I mean, the I-68 and the individuals standing out there. The one problem that we have where there's confusion is, that's in the city. And unfortunately, you are correct. At one time, they were doing it and not doing it. But I bring that up because of the correspondence 11 of us received on Monday. And several months ago, well, the letter we received by certified was from Mountain State Justice, quote, "preservation of writings and records related to Mon County pedestrian and vehicle safety ordinance." I also know several departments received FOIA's from this group. So I want to say this. Several months ago, Mountain State Justice sent us a FOIA for the exact same information. Here it is, December 19. We responded on January 5, 2024, on the exact same information. In fact, in there, Renetta McClure requested that I believe that, quote, "I have satisfied the Mon County Commission obligation. However, if you disagree, please let me know. I'm writing." Six months later, we receive it. The irony of today's certified letter from Mountain State Justice, I believe, is to intimidate the Morgantown City Council members and other local government bodies. Instead of working with us on realistic solutions, they are here to undermine, I believe, any form of cooperation that began back in October of 2023, when all the cities, the police chiefs and mayors, we all got together to see how we can resolve a growing problem facing the cities and the counties. Now, sorry to do this, but as was stated to me from an individual, we have a plethora of options. And I, and I'm going to read the 25 agencies that I deal with currently that deal with treatment, housing, addiction, and referral services around Mon County, to the tune of $1 million this county commission every year provides. And I want to just read the 25 because I'm very frustrated. Hazel's House of Hope, West Virginia Sober Living, Lauren's Wish, Wise Path Recovery Centers, Jacob's Ladder, Essential Recovery Housing Network, Valley Alliance Treatment Services, Restore Addiction Recovery Alliance, WVU Collegiate Recovery, Oxford House, BBC Rehab, Morgantown Behavior Council and Detox, Roberts Detox Support, Abundant Life Recovery, AA Meetings in Morgantown, the 17 Club and Log Cabin, Aspire, Salvation Army, West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness, Health Right, Christian Help, Depression and Bipolar Alliance, Ellie Mental Health, Montani Mental Health, Thomas Integrative Therapy, and First Choice Services. I just want the public to know that we continue to try and come up with solutions. We want to work with the other governments, and this is just very frustrating to receive something like this. That's all I'll say at this time. So I'll tell you how I feel.
Couple of things. Just to note again on what Commissioner Blue mentioned, on the pedestrian ordinance that we passed, it has been very successful at the Pierpont Center. I'm in there almost every day, and the traffic there has greatly reduced, as well as outside of the town center in Granville. The numbers are way down as far as the participation for paying, for folks being in the median in those areas. So I appreciate the law enforcement agencies in those areas taking that ordinance seriously and enforcing it. It is a safety concern, and you're exactly right. At night, it's very dangerous, and someone was hit at the Glenn Mark Center sometime in the last year due to just the unsafe nature of standing in the middle of the road at a very, that intersection at Glenn Mark is one of the top five trauma intersections in the state of West Virginia, from what I was told. So that, it couldn't be a more dangerous place. So it truly is a safety issue as far as our intent, or at least my intent, and the other commissioners have expressed the same when that ordinance was passed, and it seems to be doing the trick. So let's see, as far as barriers or anything that would be a DOH thing, we would have no control or purview of or anything like that. And I can't imagine what the process would be for studies to determine what could be done, or, so that's really all to say on that. Jamie, I do appreciate your idea as well. I went to that one in Charleston last year, it was really cool. They have a large title sponsor. He's actually a commissioner of Canal County. Ben Salanga's law firm sponsors that, so anyone that wants to come forward and sponsor that, maybe somebody that likes to help people to get hurt with trucks, you know, I don't know. I see those ads all the time on YouTube. That, we could compete with Mr. Salanga's office. But it's a great idea. It would bring in a ton of people, and it was really, really well done down there in Charleston. Before the prior meeting that we actually didn't have last week, I had a plethora of board meetings that I attended. The one I'll touch on was we had our Camp Muffley Board Meeting. And just a quick report out there, with the pool that we put in from levy monies that were funded by the citizens of this county, we've had five days of max capacity at that pool this summer.
Wow.
I don't know if you could count five days of max capacity that weren't camp-related in the prior 20 years before us doing that pool. It's become very popular. It's a very affordable, nice way to get the heat. We probably were aided by the 90-plus degree weather on a regular basis, but, so we actually had to stop, people had to wait around and enjoy the park while spots opened up at the pool. So that's been great. We've had 50-plus pool parties booked and happen at Camp Muffley this summer. There's still some through the end of the summer. But basically, if you want to, when the calendar comes out, and I believe it's March, if you want to book a pool party, book it then, because once the slots are gone, they're gone. But that's, it's a really affordable way to have a nice party, and we've got a little build-over pavilion area for the food and everything, so it's been great. And I really appreciate our staff out there, all the lifeguards and Seth, who's our superintendent, and his supervisor, JR Petska, they've all done a great job out there, really getting that park up to the standards that we want to have in the county. So I just wanted to mention those, and that's all I've got. Sean?
My agenda's been fairly light. I was on family vacation last week. This, today's a regular day, though the commission has interviews for Board of Health position this afternoon. Tomorrow starts, meetings back up, Mylan Park Foundation Board Meeting, the Health Department Board of Health Meeting, and then I have a lunch, lunch meeting with a constituent. Friday, we have staff reports. Monday, I have a lunch with constituents, and then Tuesday, we have an HR call. Also, even while I was on vacation, I did attend our first broadband call, the project initiation execution call, and it went, it went very well, and things are moving along. So I'll have more to report with our next update in two weeks from now. Ms. Fols, I'm sorry, I can't see you because of the pillar, but I do appreciate your comments. As far as a process to notify people about people in the roadway, I don't think anything other than the current process to calling 911, and they'll send people out. I think we do probably need to remind, at least as far as areas that we control, of the seriousness of this, because I do know that University Town Center does not seem to be addressed. That person is out there every day. It has not changed. It changed for a couple days, and then he's back there, and it doesn't seem like we're enforcing that. And I can't believe nobody's calling in. So we do need the sheriff to re-up and take our ordinance serious and make sure that we're covering that area. If they are, maybe I'd just happen to be driving by whenever he shows up for work every day. But that, there's an individual that's been there for the past year, and he's still there. In regards to your comment about updating appointments to the Mon County Planning Commission, when we indicated a while back that we were holding positions because of the process that we're going through with SADO, that's still the case. So we do have openings in the planning commission. We're just really trying to get through this current SADO process rather than introducing new elements into that discussion while they're at the end of trying to roll SADO back out. So, but we'll certainly keep those, your request in mind. And Jamie, thank you for your always, I love when I get a call from Jamie, because it's usually something important and exciting, then I, you know, I appreciate your enthusiasm for everything you do for our county, and I do think that'd be a wonderful event, and I hope that Granville would agree, because that's, brings, bring a lot of people to the town center. So that's all I have. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.